Evening and welcome to the July 1 meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bobby Phillips, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, our heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening, and please continue to wrap your arms around our world and protect us and give us the wisdom to recognize your leadership. Please watch over all of our first responders in our city, in our county, in our nation, and those overseas that are protecting us, our liberties, that we so greatly enjoy here. Please forgive us of all of our sins and guide us in our decision-making. Thank you, and in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. Twiss. Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mrs. Oda.
I move we excuse Mr. Tremblay, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to excuse Mr. Tremblay. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Tremblay is excused.
Move to excuse Mr. Twiss, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to excuse Mr. Twiss. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Twiss is excused.
Move we excuse Mrs. Oda.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to excuse Mrs. Oda. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda is excused.
Tonight, we have an introduction of a new firefighter. Chief Simmons, will you be making that introduction, please?
Yes, Madam President. We'd like to introduce our newest firefighter to the City Council, Matthew Webb. And firefighter Webb here, he comes to us from courtesy of Monroe Fire Department, but it was always his dream to work at the Troy Fire Department. And this wasn't the first time he actually worked for us, for checking hydrants in 2014 and 15. But he's a graduate of Troy Christian High School and also Hawken College recently. So, very happy to have him. He is a certified Level II firefighter and a paramedic also. And he's also a second-generation firefighter. His father is in the audience, Lieutenant Webb from Huber Heights. And so, we're very pleased to have Matthew. He's from the Troy area, and it's always been a dream of his to work at the Troy Fire Department, so congratulations.
Sir.
So, he was appointed June 12th, and at this time, we're going to have Assistant Chief Kreitz, since the mayor is not here, to present him with his probationary shift. Matthew, here's your shift.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
All the years you've been telling me you was going to work here, so it came true. You'll wear that when you pass probation, I'll pitch you your real shift.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the June 19 meeting.
Minutes of Council, June 19, 2017. There was a public hearing on R-30, 2017, the tax budget. There were no committee reports. Resolution number R-30, 2017, adopting the tax budget of the City of Troy was given first reading and adopted. A resolution and memoriam to M. Keith Bader, a former member of City Council, was approved, following comments, Council adjourned at 7:13 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We'll move on to committee reports. The Law and Ordnance Committee has three liquor license applications. Chairman, Mr. Swazer.
Yes, Madam President. Notice has been received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding three liquor license applications. New D-2 permit for Studio 14 Creative Arts Center LLC, DBA Studio 14 Creative Arts Center, 8 North Market Street, a new C-2 permit for Dolgen Midwest LLC, DBA Dollar General Store, 1955, at 785 West Market Street, and transfer of an existing C-1, C-2 permit from the Ninos Gas LLC at 503 East Staunton Road to the name of Fuel One LLC at 55 Express Mart of the same address. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the applications.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee has a recommendation on committee appointments. Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee supports a request given to us by Mayor Beamish for several reappointments to the City's Beautification Committee. I would move that the Council approve the reappointments of the following for a new two-year term commencing July 1st of 2017. They would be Judy Fissinger, Patricia Doran, Wanda Tremblay, Barry Van Kirk, Mary Davis, Phyllis Dawkins, and Amy Colas.
I will second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Phillips to accept the appointments to the Beautification Committee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
The appointments are approved.
We have no resolutions or ordinances this evening. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of brief ones. The offices are closed tomorrow for the holiday. However, trash and recycling are on schedule. There's no delay in the schedule. And of course, the fireworks display is tomorrow night, beginning around 10 o'clock, when it gets dark. We will be shooting them off. Well, we won't. Our contractor will. Again, near the golf course, it's a slightly different location, but still in the same general area. Understood that some folks might have thought that we were going to be shooting them off at Treasure Island, and that is not the case. We are continuing to shoot them off at the golf course. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber, any comments?
No comments this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to note that I appreciated the Troy Development Corporation 2017 report in our pocket, and glad to see the effort on workforce development. Do hope that they will also continue to look at new development as it's available and new properties to make room for any new development. Are there any comments from Council members this evening?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Swazer.
Along hydraulic avenue, there are a pile of railroad ties that were left there when CSX redid their train lines through there. It's gotten pretty overgrown now, and my real fear is that a child is going to crawl on them and possibly hurt themselves because there are spikes coming out of the ties and things like that. If CSX isn't going to pick them up, can we pick them up and charge CSX?
That would be the most difficult thing to do, not to put too fine a point on it. However, we have been in contact with CSX. First of all, we have pounded down the sharp edges. And CSX was originally supposed to be coming in next week to clean all those up. They say there is a delayed project in Indianapolis, so they intend on coming in the week of the 24th. So, we will continue to monitor it. You know, unfortunately, some of those are soaked in creosote, so us moving them and trying to reuse them, we really don't want to touch them if we don't have to.
Who has the liability on that?
Well, they're CSX property, so I'm not an attorney, but I don't believe it would be ours. Now, we did pound down the sharp edges. We did get a notification request from an area resident, and so we did do that. We will do minor property maintenance work for CSX and charge them, but there's a limited amount. And so, you know, getting that amount raised is probably a year-to-two-year-long headache.
Well, if we don't want to touch them, do we want kids crawling on them? And temporarily, can we put a fence around them?
Well, I'm not saying they're toxic to the touch or anything. They're not radioactive. I just mean that once we take them, not sure what we would do with them. And CSX has said that they will be in on the 24th, and so, we're just going to hold them to that and see what happens that week.
Of July?
Of July.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other Council members have any comments?
Madam President, by my side.
Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Titterington. Can you give us a little update on the trash collection of the additional bins and folks that initially complained about the status is with that?
We have a couple of hundred where the properties are, they're maxing out on both their trash and their recycling, so they are doing a lot of recycling. At one point, I believe Jerry mentioned up to 100 additional recycling bins. He delivered those, so people are getting into it. We did take delivery of a very limited number of larger trash receptacles for those that are doing all their recycling and have large families. And Jerry's being stingy on giving them out, but he's giving them out. I think we took delivery last week or the week before. So, it's going relatively smoothly. The number of complaints have nearly died off. People are getting used to it. Jerry continues to go out, and he will talk to people, you know, as they need it.
Madam President. Mr. Twilliger.
Mr. Titterington, about a week ago, we spoke about the sidewalk and curb project on Market north of town, where there had been some sections of sidewalks being repoured, and that, I guess I would like the public to know that that's not our doing, and that wasn't the curb project, and we're not trying to redundantly do services.
That's correct. That was our utility that was doing the relining or putting new mains out. They decided that, to protect their liability and to clean up after themselves, that they wanted to pour the sidewalk and curb back, not knowing how long it would take us to actually get our contractor in, because that could vary. And of course, with the Phase 2 Market Street project, you haven't even authorized that bidding yet. That's anticipated to be a fall-to-spring project, so they wanted to make sure that it was not left in gravel, and so, they decided to do that. That was not our work. That was not our, we didn't demand that they do that. They did that on their own.
Any other Council members' comments? Is there any comments from City staff or anyone else in the audience at this point? Okay, we do have a presentation tonight. Mr. Titterington will be providing us with an update on the MKS case study, so we will move out of the way here, move around the corner so that we can see the screen, and you can see the screen as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's tomorrow night, 8:30 or something like that. Come on out. You know, we, oh, well, our office has like a firework preview. If they're your family on our, yeah, it's, we just, right? We have like a popcorn machine, some fresh meat and stuff. Come on out and bring along, Jerry. Ready?
Go ahead.
So, here tonight to give you an update on where we're at with the Troy Downtown Riverfront Strategic Development Plan. That was a, there was a contract that was signed. Troy Main Street is the coordinator of that contract and the signer of the contract with MKS Studios out of Columbus and Covington and other areas. That's a $142,550 contract, of which the city contributed $25,000. And I say $25,000, but you know, there are some minor activation expenses that as things go along and as we start to implement things, again, they're minor expenses. Anything major, of course, will be built into the budget and discussed with the Council in the future. What I want to do is give you a summary. It's a very comprehensive study. Some of you may have been at the rollout, if you will, on June 12th. It is a 97-page slide. I'm not going to go through. Mine is 16, so don't panic. But I will give you the link if you want to look at the whole thing, because I will be summarizing a lot of the data and a lot of the recommendations, just to give you a flavor of what MKS and their team has come up with, what the Steering Committee has decided along with that team. The project was created as an offshoot of the ABC Initiative, America's Best Community Contest that we were quarterfinalists in. The partners, and I'll name them in a minute, recognized that it was important to continue the dialogue and some of the momentum, really, through our self-analysis, if you will, during that ABC process. And one of the things, one of the initiatives that we wanted to continue to pursue further was, you know, how can we make our Downtown Riverfront Corridor that much better than it already is? So, the goal that the project team came up with was crafting a development plan so that we could take what we have, focus on some new initiatives, some new projects, some new programs, that will take us to the next level, and ultimately, with the overriding goal of providing the amenities, the quality of life, the attractions to increase the employee base for our employers. Because when all is said and done, everything that we've been doing, every investment that we make, as you know, involves economic development and sustaining and growing the businesses that we have, as well as attracting new businesses. And we cannot do that. We have been told time and again now from our employers that we cannot do that unless we grow the base of employees from which they can draw, the professional level, skilled trade level, frontline as well. The players, the partners in this, the public and private partnership that we have in place is, of course, the City of Troy, Troy Area Chamber of Commerce, the Troy Development Council, Troy Main Street, as I mentioned, the Troy Foundation, the Duke Foundation, we're all contributors, and on the Steering Committee. Downtown stakeholders, we have several who have made private investments and continue to be downtown investors, who are actively involved in that. As a matter of fact, Wade Westfall is here in the audience, along with other members of the Steering Committee. Wade is one of the co-chairs of the Steering Committee for this project. And then, on the consultant side, MKS is the lead consultant. However, they do have a team of other companies that are involved as well. BLDG, Green Street Analytics, and LJB Engineering are all part of that team. And so, as we go through this summary, you'll see that the process was broken down, or has been broken down, into three components. Understanding what we have, where we are, where we're going to be, and what the future trends look like. Testing ideas that MKS has either catered to Troy or plagiarized from other communities and use as best practices, and are suggesting that with our amenities and our footprint would work well here in meeting and matching the goals that we have. And then, ultimately, deciding and doing or implementing the strategy, the recommendations that they are making to us. So, starting with understanding. This picture here, it's a little small print. I know Sue emailed you a copy of these slides. Hopefully, they came through. If not, let me know. I can get you, we can get you a prettier version. But this is a map of the area under study, and it highlights the existing assets, landmarks, if you will, that we have. The good, the bad, the opportunities and the priorities are all there. It's not an exhaustive list. There are many other assets there and landmarks that would have basically jumped up the slide, so they wanted to keep some of the key ones on there and not get overburdened some. MKS, as part of their initial data gathering process, coordinated basically three forms of gathering community input. Focus groups, and we had 120-plus, which is probably close to 150 now, participants. It was 13 groups, but I believe that just last week, they had three more groups that met, primarily from the HR side of some of our larger, our business community. I won't say larger business community, but large and small. Also, had 130 community members, stakeholders respond to survey questions, and we continue to get feedback through stakeholder meetings, social media, anecdotal comments, as well as community meetings such as this. And just for your information, we have either scheduled or in the process of scheduling several more community meetings, including tonight's meeting. We have one with the county commissioners coming up. We will present to the Planning Commission, the Rotary Club. I believe they've already met with the Quanis, the Optimists. We are in the process of scheduling. We will be scheduling with the Miami Conservancy District, since they own a lot of the land along the riverbanks, or all of the land for that matter. Troy Community Works. We are also in the process of setting up a meeting with the Southwest Historic District to meet and discuss with them, because we understand that there are a lot of questions, not necessarily concerns, but you know, a lot of good questions that we'd love to answer. Troy Main Street Board, Troy Development Council Board, the Chamber of Commerce Boards. They are large groups. They have representatives here that communicate back to them, but any opportunity they can meet with the whole board, then we are in the process of scheduling those. The Troy Foundation Board as well, and others that will just continue to add as their interested groups that want to come together and hear what we have to say. Some of these meetings that I listed will be combined meetings in the interest of efficiency.
Can, excuse me, can you keep Council informed of when those meetings are and where they are? Any public meetings so that individual Council members, if they like, can be there?
Sure.
Thank you.
We can certainly do that. Sue is writing that down right now.
Yes.
Thank you. Regarding the community feedback from those, from that feedback that I listed in the previous slide, none of this should be too surprising. Everyone, or most people, after the exercise, including a dot-mocracy, I think I'm finally saying that correctly, put the red, yellow, green dots all over. So, the best places that people indicated were the square, the arena, Treasure Island. You know, there were dots in the courthouse, the library throughout downtown. There should be no surprises there. I hesitated putting the next one up there. Worst places, that was MKS's words, there are areas where people feel like there's the most opportunity to freshen up or redevelop. They include East Water Street, particularly along the industrial, that industrial area there, the southeast section of downtown, where we can, in the future, possibly add some bike linkages off of the wreck trail. Confusing parking, which is something that we will talk about in the next month or two, related to the Wolfert Study, as well as our traffic analysis. We are coming to the end of that study. And then, piggybacking off of those quote-unquote "worse places," the opportunities and priorities that the community feels that we'd be best focused on, including the riverbanks along Water Street, the East Water industrial sites. Bike lane linkages was another one that was brought up as an opportunity that we should As part of understanding, Green Street was the analytic part of the team, and they did the market analysis, the demographics analysis, and the trend forecasting for us. And what they found was that our Riverfront Corridor lacks multi- and mixed-use units, as well as small detached housing, that we are probably overrepresented on the single-family detached housing in the Riverfront Corridor, but we also lack the empty nester, the smaller, the low-maintenance, the senior living component. Those are the demographics that we're not hitting very well in the downtown area. Some of the interesting facts that they threw at us included the fact that within a 15-minute walk of the fountain and the square, $55.8 million in sales is generated from the households that live there. And that's based on averages. Didn't dive into how they came up with that number, but we trust their data. However, the 2,000 downtown households generate $85.3 million worth of purchasing power, meaning that $30 million walks out of downtown and doesn't stay there. And so, that excess capacity is something that can be captured as part of our long-term plans. So, based on our future population, housing demand, and other growth projections, downtown has the potential of adding 4,000 to 7,000 square feet of new retail space, as well as 3,000 to 4,000 square feet of new office space. Okay, now, remember from this slide, I'm not talking about building new, necessarily building new buildings and expanding the area of our downtown. Part of this is redevelopment. Part of this is taking buildings and making them mixed-use. And part of it is- And part of it is looking very closely at our existing zoning code and how we can better incentivize those kind of mixed uses within our code and within the downtown. I guess it really likes this slide and it doesn't want to unhandle it. So from the community input, from the market analysis, this is the vision that the team put together. And when you get over the first couple of bullets, which is kind of the 30,000-foot bird's-eye view, really what we're trying to do from an economic development standpoint is increase our property values, raise the investment returns, and create a community that has young people that grow up here. Maybe they move away from college. They want to come back. They want to build their family. And then when they retire and they're ready to, you know, move on from the maintenance and the operating and the upkeep of a detached house, they want to stay here, but they want a different product that maybe is underserved right now in Troy. So that's the kind of vision that we have overall for this project. There we go. So as we move from understanding, from knowing what we have, where we want to be, and what our vision is, this is where MKSK and their team started talking about game-changing ideas for the downtown. And so what they called it is idea testing, because frankly, some of these ideas are pretty radically different than what some of our more experienced and conservative long-term Trojans might think. And so MKSK, in their experience with other communities, said, you know, pick a few low-hanging fruit projects that maybe you can test out over the next year or two, and tweak them if necessary. And if they just really don't work, then we can move on to other ideas. So first idea, so the team, the steering committee picked two ideas to demonstrate, to demo, starting this summer. All right? The first one is activating what they call the Cherry Street Commons. And these names are just working names. They may change, but Cherry Street Commons, we kind of liked. And what that is, is the section of Cherry Street between Main Street and Water Street. Ultimately, permanently could, in the future, be closed off to vehicular traffic and become a walking area from Main Street north to where it, again, it ends at Water Street. Ultimately, in the long term, there could be, in the long range, there could be a building that goes right behind the, perpendicular to the Mayflower and the Furniture Store. 10 years or more, I, in theory, hypothetically anyway, you know, that could be the back of a parking structure. You know why I hesitated saying that? But ultimately, it could be. And what that would create is this kind of a, more narrow, but I forget where this picture is taken, but that kind of concept. And it would be a gathering place. And we would move many of the particularly crowded, well-attended events off of Proud Plaza onto Cherry Street, and then reuse Proud Plaza as truly a plaza. And I'll get to that in a minute. Some of these bullets explain that, you know, if we can take them off Proud Plaza, if, as we maintain two state routes, it becomes a lot safer to hold the events in Cherry Street. A little more intimate for those smaller gatherings that we might have, where if they're on Proud Plaza, it's, you know, the site may be too overwhelming for the type of event that we're holding. There may be some additional uses that ultimately we could get out of Cherry Street. For example, in the long run, if that becomes a permanent, you know, walking, non-vehicular area, it might open up some storefronts along the sides of Cherry Street, and there, maybe the Mayflower might want to subdivide, or even the Furniture Store may want to have some specialty shops or pop-up shops, as they call them, up and down that North Cherry Street section. And then the noise would be channeled and funneled. That's the theory. This is why we demo these projects. So, going to do this three times during the summer. On July 14th, we're going to move one of our concerts from Proud Plaza over to Cherry Street. On August 12th, we're going to have a, an outdoor movie, family bike-themed movie of epic proportions. Oh, I said that out loud. Sorry, guys. And then on September 28th, we're going to have a dining event, an outdoor dining event, hosting 150 to 200 folks. It'll be a ticketed event, and the ticket prices will just offset the costs of getting, you know, getting it ready. The idea being that we would invite chefs that have moved out of Troy and that are in the Cincinnati, Columbus area, Dayton as well, as well as our local chefs. And it would be a locally grown, or at least a component of it would be locally grown, a farm-to-table type event. That'll be September 28th. And as part of that, as part of this activation, we would have a connection to Proud Plaza with the concert and possibly the movie. The speakers and the sound will be, we hope, will be able to broadcast into Proud Plaza. We intend on moving temporarily some of the tables at some of our parks, you know, taking a few tables from each park and putting them on Proud Plaza so they can be a public gathering place. And we probably will leave those tables there through the summer so people can just kind of get used to the idea. And there's a longer-term plan with Proud Plaza that if this were to work and if this were the direction we wanted to take, we'd have some more uses for Proud Plaza as well. The other activation project or demo project that we want to do is the implementation of bike lanes. There are several wide streets, so backing up for a minute. You know, one of the objectives of this study was to make better connections from our recreation trail, the 320-some or 350-mile paved surface that we have, that runs along the south levee banks in front of Treasure Island, but once it hits Adam Street, it goes north and goes just south of the arena on the north side, and basically away from the downtown. So your only connection to downtown is if you turn right at Adam Street, or you go to the, you know, to the levee, and then turn right on the market, over the Market Street Bridge. Which, given the flow of traffic and on Market Street, the sidewalk isn't as wide as it is on Adam Street, you know, can be intimidating or at least confusing to some folks. So it's not the easiest route to take. So adding a bike lane on the south side of Water Street is something that we want to do temporarily by August 1st. Other downtown roads that are excellent candidates for bike lanes include Plum Street, Canal, Franklin, Mulberry, and Simpson. You know, they've talked, MKSK talked to us about adding boulevards, kind of like you have in front of St. Pat's and on, I believe, Summit, for example, and other areas. Not sure that we want to tax the, probably a wrong word, but stress the Park Department with any more work. So whether we would go the full boulevard route or not remains to be seen. But it's easy to create along South Water Street, a two-way bike lane, minimum four feet width, maintain parking on the north side of Water Street, on West Water Street, west of Market. And then do some markings on the asphalt at Treasure Island and the Kettering property so that people know that they can go right and down Water Street to get to the downtown very, much easier than they otherwise would. But if they want to stay on Route 25A, which is the regional bike path designation, they can take a left and continue on the levee. And I'll come back to that one because, yes, we do have a conversation set up with the county commissioners for July 11th, and so one of their questions is, what are they going to do about south water, south side of West Water Street parking? We'll come back to that. So as we, as they tested, as they recommended testing ideas, they're looking at a two-year window. Other ideas that we can test over the next two years is the idea of an artist-in-residency program. They brought up Kohler, Wisconsin. Kohler makes ceramic plumbing items. And they have an artist-in-residency program that focuses on ceramics. Well, they thought, well, you know, with some of the underutilized area of East Main and East Water Street, why not look at an artist-in-residency program that perhaps focuses on metalworks and highlights our tradition in the welding industry and metalworks? Another idea that would be fairly simple to demonstrate is the idea of a Troy Truck Yard. And no, that is not a semi-drop lot, so we will probably be changing the name if it comes to fruition. But again, on the east side of Water Street, in the industrial area, in one of the areas, there's a very large riverfront, riverbank-adjacent parking lot. And so maybe on the weekends, rope it off, fence it off, however, and you can have food trucks come in, maybe microbreweries in their trailers, and it would be kind of an after-work, beginning of the weekend, active, you know, location. It's not an idea that we want to test this summer, but it may be something that we look at next summer. And then with the discussion of Proud Plaza, the idea there is, is to take it not only from just adding picnic tables, tables and benches, tables and chairs, but ultimately, as you see from that picture, that rendering, creating a true plaza look to it, where there is a building facing Main Street, or parallel to Main Street anyway, that may block some of the more active noise from the highway, from the state highway. You know, could be a pavilion, could be kind of a back-of-house for events that we have at the Cherry Street Commons. The art wall, I'm not sure what they meant there because we all know the mural is there to stay. Perhaps a smaller corner stage back towards the back of the Mayflower Building there. And the idea of public restrooms continues to come in, something more permanent than the Porterlets. Not Porta-Johns, Porterlets. You're welcome. And so just to back up, the idea testing that MKSK did for us, they broke it down into zero to two years, two to five years, five to 10, and then, you know, the next decade or more, some ideas for the long run. So as I go through, I'm breaking them down into year segments. So two to five years, then, they talked about the idea of creating a Water Street marketplace. They really like the Troy Lumberyard Building. Now, a lot of these, some of these recommendations that they made, they made in advance of any public announcements, but we have had conversations with Kettering in the event that they end up owning the entire block from the river up, and they do, and they do not right now. So these are, again, all just concepts and hypotheticals. But the idea there would be something along the lines of the Second Street Market in Dayton, or the Findlay Market in Cincinnati. Something, you know, to be, to draw an analogy to. River District Phase 1 and the bridge of design. That idea is, because we have this need for multi-unit residential, smaller, lower-maintenance residential, the best, they quickly focused on the north levee banks as being a, really a great, the best view of the downtown. If you want a riverfront view, if you want a view of the downtown and the river, that's the best place because you can get it elevated, you're already elevated on the banks, and it is green space that you could really maximize and put a number of units in. As well as add some out-of-district but district-adjacent parking to help alleviate the parking perception problem downtown. And that's a longer-term fix. It was, it's a cultural change, we understand, but particularly with the five-to-10-year development idea testing, if you will, and the idea of adding a pedestrian bridge between that area, say in, say around here, over to where it would terminate, kind of where the county court, between the county courthouse and the administrative building, and then Plum Street is down this way. That would allow you to connect the asphalt river, recreation trail, directly into the downtown by using that bridge. So I'm saying pedestrian bridge, it's really just a non-vehicular bridge is the point there. And then the other idea that they threw at us was the idea of creating a rental pool of condos and apartments downtown that, similar to what vacation destinations do, where somebody owns the property, but they turn it over to a management company. In our case, it wouldn't be for beachgoers, but rather could be for catering to welding school students, our business executives that come in for a one-to-, two-to-, three-year rotation, and other short-term kind of uses that there is a demand for. So in the five-to-10-year range, then, connecting the River District and the Great Miami River Recreation Trail, that's GMRT, I can say that quickly, to the downtown, we have already started discussions with MVRPC, because that is a, definitely a five-year implementation plan, because there are discussions with ODOT, there's engineered designs that need to be put in, there are, there's a grant cycle that we have to get into, and that cycle, the next, the next deadline for that is in October, and so there's a lot of design work that we have to do in that is in October, and so there's a lot of design work that we have to do in advance to get to a point where we can submit. But again, because of all of the due diligence that we have to have, or we have to go through, that is, doing it now and not waiting a year is better, does not commit us to millions of dollars of funding, you know, nothing like that, but, you know, we will have to start talking about, you know, who's going to invest in that bridge and what kind of breakdown in public-private partnership there would be. On June 12th, if you were there, you had another opportunity to participate in Dot Democracy. Again, the red, green, and blue, with the blue being those projects that frankly, the participants felt we were taking too long to implement. The bridge got a lot of blue dots. So the bridge and the River District got more blue dots than they got green dots, and nobody put a red dot in front of those two projects. So if that's any indication, it's only a small percentage of the total population of Troy, but it was surprising to see all of that green and blue. Another project that they are recommending that we look at in the five-to-10-year window is to improve our roundabout. Now, I will add a footnote that some of what they're talking about, the shorter-term improvements, you know, we may be looking at those as part of the traffic and parking study from Wolfert that you'll be seeing in the next month or two. But ultimately, one of their more radical ideas in the five-to-10 or longer timeframe would be to change from the circular roundabout and using the quads, eliminating the parking in those quads, flattening that all out, and having the traffic route in a square pattern around the fountain and the whole square, in the quadrant, in each quadrant, creating a, what amounts to a squareabout. And there are those that, there's an area in Pittsburgh that is a good example. That would require, though, a rerouting of the state highways, definitely. And so that is a longer term, so I'm representing this as a five-to-10-year project. That was option two that MKSK threw out there, but they recognize that there are quite a few things that we have to, we have to do to get to that point, if we even want to get to that point, because again, that's a radical departure. But their feeling is, is that by making that a square, then you're really able to use the entire square. Right now, the fountain is off limits. We do close down the quads, the whole, and detour everybody for Troy Strawberry Festival and some of our bigger events, but reengineering, redesigning that and flattening that out would create a truly, a much larger interconnected public gathering space for those events and more. So that's their thinking. That's why it's kind of radical, and we, frankly, I don't think we would have thought about that if they hadn't thrown that at us. And then the other, other one is, just to continue with the East Water Street redevelopment, you know, as we have more discussions with Spinnaker, we know that they're underutilizing their building. You have the property that Dick Steineman owns across from the Soup Kitchen. You have Ethan's, the Smith Fly Building, next to the Soup Kitchen. Not that he's underutilizing it, but he's already talking about ways that he can, you know, continue to grow his presence and his visibility there. And then you've got the Hope Art Cabinet Building as well, that has been undergoing some changes and ultimately would be a good candidate for some redevelopment in the five, 10, 15-year window. And so then you get into the 10-year or more, longer-term ideas, ideas such as creating boutique hotel spaces. If you really look closely at that, at least in one version, I don't even know if I can see that, they had talked about reusing the North Market ballfields, relocating them and creating hotel space on that property. In the 10-plus years, yes, Mr. Phillips, you might see at least some discussion about dedicated parking facilities. Senior-themed housing surrounding, and in the general area of the Senior Citizen Center. The expansion of the ITW site. And that site that I'm talking about is the one on Ridge, not the Kettering site, although, you know, we still don't know what Kettering's ultimate plans are, but, you know, in the two-to-five-to-10-year window, who knows what they'll do on that property as well? Because that is a key, a key bend, if you will, from Treasure Island into the gateway to downtown. And MKSK has been very interested in that site and has wanted to engage in conversations a lot earlier than when we were able to connect those, them with the Kettering folks. And ultimately, in the long-range plan, Treasure Island-Duke Park Bridge Design is still a priority for many folks. It is a longer-term project, but we do want to keep it on our radar screen. And then, I don't get into it very much here, but you can see from this map, with the legend, this is the current and planned and hoped-for bike network or recreational trail network expansion, so that it interconnects in downtown, goes through downtown. You know, we add some spurs as well along the railroad, hopefully without railroad ties in the way. And then it opens up new properties for possible public spaces and redevelopment, both public and private. So that's the, so we've talked about the understanding and then the idea, testing. So the final step, and what they are working on now and what we are helping to implement are those things that, you know, we can do now and then concentrate on what we can, should, and will be doing in the future, subject to adjustments like anything else, because this is, I'd say, probably two-thirds to three-quarters done, so there's still some work that's being done. Activating the Cherry Street Commons, as I mentioned, July 14th, August 12th, and September 28th will be our demo projects there. We will be having a conversation with the county, not only about Water Street and the south side of West Water Street, but also related to their county garage, which is right behind the Furniture Store. They do have openings on the Cherry Street side, as well as the side facing the administration, the safety building. But when we have those events, they will have to block off temporarily the access point on the Cherry Street elevation. It will retain the parking lot access, but again, they will lose the garage access. We've talked to Jeremy about it, getting the stage in place shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue. We will block off the road in plenty of time, we will notify the adjacent property owners. We've already started having discussions with the Mayflower and the Furniture Store. July 11th will be the conversation with the county commissioners. West Water Street by August 1st, we want to have temporary markings for the two-way bike lane on the south side. We will have to prohibit parking on the south side. That will eliminate approximately 26 spaces from Adams Street to Market Street. However, we walked the site last week, and by, we can add spaces on a couple of the adjacent streets that are perpendicular to Water Street, as well as add some additional spaces on North Market, or North, the north side of West Water, and that will immediately create 21 spaces. We will also stripe and block off each space, so people know where to park on the street, on those roads, as well as West Water Street. And so we know that we will at least replace those 26 spaces, if not add spaces, because as we walked and we surveyed it for about a week, just did a windshield survey-type thing, because we wanted to capture the court days, as well as the non-court days during the week, as well as the residential parking that we know happens on the north side of West Water. And without having marked spaces, the use of the right-of-way isn't as efficient as it should be. So we know we can gain some spaces by putting in the standard eight-by-20-foot rectangular parallel parking spaces. And we will have a map, and we'll present that map to the county, so that they know, and so hopefully there won't be any issues with that. So beyond what, oh, turned blue. Beyond the activations for this year, we also are concurrently working with BLDG to update our brand, which is a lot more than just our logo, but that's what people usually point to. So the idea, or one of the components of updating the brand would be, will be looking at the Troy, Ohio, USA logo. But much more than that, it'll be figuring out the best way to tell our story, because one thing that MKSK and BLDG, in the focus groups in particular, found was that most people struggled to say why they enjoy Troy, what's best about Troy, other than the, you know, the common two or three things you hear, well, it's safe, it's got a nice downtown. Beyond that, it was really hard to get people to articulate what Troy's all about. And so that's what they're doing, and as a result of that, they're going to look at the Troy, Ohio, USA, they're going to look at some of the other logos, they're going to look at our Riverfront Corridor logo, and the best way to message and market our story internally and externally. And so that process is ongoing right now. It should be done, and we will be coming back to the council to get feedback, as well as some of the other groups as well. The same partners on the public side that are involved in the MKSK study are also involved in the rebranding, because that was not part of the MKSK study, it was additional cost. What MKSK will be doing is taking a few of the, well, they'll be giving us some broad-based estimates on the concept costs that we just talked about, particularly the ones from zero to five years. And a few of those key initiatives, the ones that the Steering Committee selects, they will be rendering detailed drawings to show us really what they're thinking and what they think would look the best, just to give us some visuals. Some of the things that, on the public infrastructure side, that we'll be looking at, particularly for the 2018 budget, will be, you know, what kind of advanced engineering work, design work might we need to be doing to get ready and get prepared? Because what I failed to mention earlier is that MKSK deliberately split out all of those recommendations into those different year ranges, not only because they had a lot of recommendations, but, you know, there's only so much that we can absorb at a time. Not only us as a city, but also the private investors and some of the other stakeholders. And so by spreading it out, you know, we may decide that one of the projects in the five-year range, we really want to do in the two-year range and vice versa, but they wanted to make sure that we had a consistent and workable and doable plan for the next five to 10 years, if not longer. As I mentioned, with the list of community meetings, we will continue to educate the decision-makers, the stakeholders, as well as property owners, and then they'll help us find some other ways, maybe some best practices in other communities, where, you know, we're leveraging not only our dollars, but also our ability to change regulations, policies, and laws to help the market, the private market invests, so that, because we don't want to be in a position where we're spending money that we all know we don't have. So this is our, this is the, I could have said the extremely serious disclaimer. But that was 16 slides worth. There is 97 slides, it is on our website, as well as on Troy Main Street's website. There are the names of the two individuals who are leading the effort at the Steering Committee level. Greg is our Assistant Development Director, and Wade is a downtown investor. I think they're both in the audience, can you raise your hands, please? Hey, there, there. Greg is the one in the white shirt, by the way. So if you have any questions later, feel free to give them a call, or of course, you all have my email and know where I live and work, unfortunately. So I did not try to introduce the committee that's here, but as I glance in the audience, we do have several members of the Steering Committee here. Any one of them, since I've talked long enough, probably longer than you wanted, we, you know, we can answer any questions that you have, but we do want as much feedback. And part of these meetings, this meeting, as well as the other meetings that we've already had and are going to have, MKSK is still wanting us to provide them with feedback, because this is still a living document, and it still is being changed and amended and tweaked based on comments. So it is not, this is not a done deal, this is not a completed document. It is pretty far along, but it's not too far along.
One question, will council, excuse me, will council eventually be asked to approve this in its entirety? Or will we be approving things as, on the individual projects? Or does council have any input in this at all, other than one-on-one, as you've suggested to this point? In other words, can we weigh in as a group that we've adopted this? Because as you know, we're the ones on the front line when it comes to the public and taking the questions, the heat for changes.
Sure. As far as a formal adoption of the plan, it would be, it's not necessary, it's not legally required, it's much the same as the comprehensive plan. Certainly, if the council wanted to do that by resolution, that would be great, it would certainly send a very important message. Where the council will definitely weigh in is when we get into public infrastructure improvements that require bidding, that require funding, that, you know, require radical changes, that require council legislative action, such as submitting the grant for a bridge, such as if we wanted to petition ODOT to change the state routes and create a squareabout instead of a roundabout. You know, any number of ways, the council will definitely be involved.
Okay. I'm going to start by taking questions from council members. Brock, do you have any questions at this point, or comments?
Yes, Madam President, I would like, I would love to see the Cherry Street Commons event succeed in a big way. Who is doing the marketing for that? Is it Troy Main Street? Is it, everybody's going to try to get it out there? What's the plan for the marketing? What's the plan for the marketing?
Uh, the marketing has already kinda started, uh, kinda started. Um, the, the first event will be moving an existing concert that's already been advertised for Prati Plaza, just shifting it over to Cherry Street, which is, you know, right next door. Um, so we've started getting that word out, that'll, the Troy Main Street, um, and, and the city, you know, will continue to push that out on social media. Uh, the movie is a new event, um, and, um, so we are starting that process right now, getting some of the artwork together. Uh, there, that, that will not only be a movie, but because it's a bike and family-themed, uh, event, uh, there are some plans to have some kind of partner, uh, some downtown business activities involved in that, as well as some Treasure Island events on the front end of it. Uh, you know, have some, uh, bike safety-related and bike decorating, uh, activities at Treasure Island, a group bike ride along the Water Street bike path, uh, bike lanes down to, you know, uh, an escorted, uh, group ride down to the movie. Um, they will have a, uh, we're not calling it the scavenger hunt, but, uh, a, a, a business-related event, uh, kind of a Where's Waldo-type event that, you know, you can get your card stamped and you take selfies with, when you find it and you, and you're going into the businesses so you're, you know, helps promote the businesses downtown, those kind of things. And, and so we're rolling that out right now.
Okay.
Uh, pardon the pun. And the, uh, the bigger event, the, the more involved, uh, event that's still being coordinated is the, uh, the dining event.
Okay.
Uh, it is the end of September, so we don't want to start advertising that. Uh, we don't, we, we're still working on the budget, the chefs participating, uh, and then, and getting the logistics taken care of on that event.
Patrick, you're saying "we." Who do you mean by "we"?
Uh, okay, so, I mean, the city's involved because it is the public right-of-way and so, you know, we're helping out where we can. Uh, the "we" is Troy, uh, The Chamber, uh, The Foundation, um, the, um, Troy Main Street, uh, basically all the partners.
Okay.
Have something involved with it. I mean, we're all invested in this, these demos, and so we want to make sure they succeed.
Seems like a neat opportunity, there's, that could be a big thing if we make it the kickoff to this Cherry Street area. Uh, we could do a lot of different things to try to promote that and make it into something good. Uh, good, thank you. Madam, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Choisier?
Yes, ma'am. Um, first off, I, I, I think this is a great plan. Um, I think that overall, we may be 10 years behind the curve when you look at other cities such as, um, the Over Rhine area down in Cincinnati, Grove City, um, I think Miami'sburg is moving along with trying to develop their riverfront also, um, City of Dayton. Um, so the faster we can do a lot of this stuff, I think the better off we're going to be. Um, I have a concern with putting bike lanes on Franklin Street, Cherry Street, Plum Street, um, given that in, in, in that area, a lot of the residents have to park on the street. And when you couple that with Franklin Street where there's a lot of overflow from people that work downtown, that park on Franklin Street and some of those side streets, and then we start coupling that with, uh, closing off the square or quads in the square, um, I would be very concerned with, with where people are going to park after we do that.
And your, your concerns are duly noted and those are the kind of concerns that we're going to look at, particularly with the Water Street activation. Um, Plum Street, for example. Uh, now, if you drive in that, in that direction, um, the next time you drive it, really, I mean, don't get distracted and run into anything, but look and see really how wide that road is. It's deceptively wide, all right? So, there are way, well, there are ways, and there are plenty of, of configurations where you can have share, a, a parking lane and also have bike lanes. Plenty of places that, that do that, uh, plenty of examples. Not saying that'll work in every case, not, not saying it's necessary in every case. Some of it may be coupled with, as we, um, uh, on the east side, for example, as redevelopment occurs in some of the underutilized, uh, sites. What MKSK, when you dive into the 97-slide presentation, the comprehensive presentation, um, they identify those as redevelopment and parking facility sites. It doesn't mean a structure, but it's additional parking that maybe there can be a public partnership and create some additional public, uh, parking areas. So, you know, we're not saying that those five or six roads or streets tomorrow, they're all going to be striped green and they're going to be off-limits to parking and they're going to be dedicated bike, uh, bike lanes. We are, it, it would be a gradual thing and it would be in concert with these other developments that are going on. There's a lot of logic, I couldn't give you all of that logic, uh, unless you had another hour to go. Um, so, you know, it, it does make sense and there is a rational rollout that could and would occur if that's the ultimate direction we want to go.
So there's, this isn't something that's going to happen this year?
No. Uh, the only, the only, um, bike lane demo that we're going to do is Water Street.
Okay.
Now, it may be a huge success and somebody may come back to us on Plum Street and say, hey, we'd love to see it. We may have, you know, there's some questions in the Southwest Historic District about what's going to happen with parking. Well, we explain all this to them, you know, we may have somebody say, you know, we do have a lot of, of bike riders that are right in the middle of the street, it'd be nice if they had lanes, can you move that up? We don't know.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Kendall?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I, I just want to make a couple of comments here. Uh, for, first of all, when, uh, I sat through the presentation by MKSK, uh, was very excited about it. I mean, that, this is something that, that we need, like John said, that, you know, we're, we're maybe a little bit be, behind the curve already, so we need to, to up the ante and, and get moving on it. But, uh, you know, from a business perspective, this is playing right into not, I mean, the big talk is satisfying the millennials, but we're, we need to also satisfy, you know, those, as you said, that want to stay around here for their entire lives and, and end up, uh, retiring here in Troy also. And thi- this does it. I mean, I, I spent a lot of time in Europe over, over the years with, uh, business and all, and these squareabouts and what has become of, of the plazas and within them, I mean, they, they become the hub of a city, uh, with all, all the, you know, the restaurant opportunities and, and the, and the walking opportunities and, and all that they present to us. So, um, you know, I think we're right on. I, I just wish some of it could be sooner, that Bev and I could, uh, you know, take advantage of, of the housing and all, because we're getting at that point where we're looking at that. And I know, uh, uh, we've got quite a few friends that their main complaint is, as they're getting older, they still have an active lifestyle, they want the bike path, they want the river, but they also want to have easy access to it, which condos and the apartments would provide that, so.
So if I can, uh, at the risk of bursting both yours and John's bubble, because I, I like that you, I selfishly like the fact that you guys think we're a little behind the curve because that bodes well for when we come with the budget and want some more money, but, um, and, and the steering committee will, will agree that MKSK has been extremely impressed with the level of activity, uh, events, the projects, the, the basic infrastructure and, and how, how big our little city acts in terms of, of all of this. Uh, so, you know, they're very impressed that these are next-level things, these are not things that, you know, we're a decaying city and we really need to, you know, turn it all around. They're, they're looking at this as, you know, you guys are already, you know, doing the, uh, the activities of a city twice our size. Uh, we, you know, we have, of course, have the downtown and the, and the, you know, the involvement of so many different groups that they just don't see in any other community. So, we are in the right direction. They have never said that we are behind the eight ball or we are behind other communities. Others may be a little more vocal about what they're doing, others that, you know, that you have listed have really started, you know, they, they've had to get a lot more active, a lot quicker because they were getting to that point where they were going to start seeing the decay if they didn't turn it around. We're not there, MKSK has real, been real excited during this project because we're not there and because we want to go to the next level, um, knowing that we already have a good core and a good basis for, for how we operate.
And I accept that. I mean, it's, uh, was not-
Just remember that at budget times.
Yeah, was not, was not looking at it from a negative perspective, that what we are doing today, so.
Mr. Phillips, any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am. Um, one of the things, I think, you know, Mr. Tiderington, is that I, we've been talking about some of these projects probably from day when I came on council, some, touching on some of these areas. Um, and I think that they're, uh, really needed, uh, for our community. However, we will need to, uh, continue to reach out to the masses of the public that really don't know anything about this. Uh, there's only 130 or so, uh, individuals, uh, and these organizations that have been involved and the, undergoing a, uh, park process and some other things, the mass misinformation that will come off of, of this and the feedback that will come back to council members individually, uh, and on Facebook pages and other things, that will just be so delightful to deal with if we don't do that. So marketing these ideas is a huge, huge thing that we need to accomplish in a positive fashion. Um, I think that if we somehow, um, were able to take whatever we're going to take out of this and put into the comprehensive plan, it makes it a more, uh, stable, uh, bill of goods, if you will, uh, to, uh, process and deal with instead of a standalone, I think that that should be included, uh, and, and go in that direction. But generally, I think these are very positive things, uh, as I indicated, things that I've been on my mind for quite some time. I don't, I, and I've asked what the numbers of the bicyclists are, uh, and that sort of thing, I've never heard a number of, of what we have traveling our byways of cyclists downtown and, uh, the, the, the need for the extensive network of cyclists. Um, so I think that that's something that we need to justify also. So I, those are my areas of concern. Generally, I'm, I'm very supportive of it, I think it's, uh, part of the forward thinking that the City of Troy has done in its lifetime. And I think that's a very positive thing. Thank you.
Mrs. Sneak?
Um, I, I'll just echo some of those comments, I like, uh, the way this study looks, I especially like the recognition of the shortage of types of housing, especially the more, um, lack of a better word, urban-like housing, uh, non-detached, low maintenance, those kind of things. Um, and again, with the encouragement of publicizing, getting it out there, as many stakeholder meetings, um, as possible in order to answer those questions. One specific question that I had, um, with what we were going over, the, the parking lot you mentioned that was in the industrial area on Water Street, is that the parking lot that is, uh, to the east of Van Cleve on the riverfront that you were referring to for a potential event?
East of Van Cleve, I guess, I think it's right in that area, it's, uh, I can be more specific, it is the, the parking lot that I guess would be just west of Spinnaker. It's part of Spinnaker's parking lot.
It's part of Spinnaker, not the one that is potentially part of Van Cleve.
Is that the one right off of their dock? Look at you, Greg.
Okay, that, that parking lot between Spinnaker and the Hobart.
Hobart, Hobart.
Okay, okay, I just, I wanted to clarify because I was trying to picture that parking lot.
You know, it could, could be used, but yeah, you're right, it's the cabinet one, uh, right next to the railroad.
That was just a specific question, other than that, it looks, it looks good.
Mr. Turwelleker?
Well, being a newbie on council, there's a lot of areas that our council has worked with before that I'm still learning about. I appreciate all the activity that has gone into this study, I think it's, uh, it could be a real plus, but to me, the whole issue, uh, is parking, parking in a variety of different locations. There's also an issue when they listed those sites or those things you most identify with Troy, I think they made a huge glaring mistake and that is they failed to mention the green space of the levee. That to me is very, very important not to lose that. I think we as council want to encourage economic development, but not at all cost and that cost being things that you cannot ever replace again. The parking becomes multiple in regards to the courthouse and Patrick, I think you mentioned it earlier, days when they're in session and a variety of different parking issues that happen there. If you want to develop the north side of the levee, we just put a lot of money into Hobart and if you're going to reduce potential parking capacity to a site that you just spent money to enhance, that might be something to think about. They want the new ice, if they were to get the new ice on that one side, then you need more parking. If you put senior citizens and housing on Market Street and you take away ballfields that we just failed to pass an issue on for Duke Park, where does that go? So I, the, the whole concept is great, Troy needs to move forward, but parking, parking and where do people go?
Ma'am Chair, just to, uh, uh, answer some of those as best we can, we've, we have identified those as potential concerns and questions, uh, every one of the things that you mentioned. Uh, as we've discussed very early on, there, there was a, a debate about the River District and the loss of the green space out there, you know, the, the Strawberry Festival, yes, it's downtown, but there's certainly a lot of peo- folks and a lot of booths that continue out on the levee. Um, so, and, and we have a couple of, uh, major cross-country events, track events that are out on the levee every year. So our, you know, we are sensitive and we've, we've made MKSK sensitive to, anything that's done there needs to retain, you know, the green space. And so as, when they're putting the renderings together and they're starting to do some very, very rough drawings, they, they're going to take that into consideration because it's, it's not a done deal. Regarding the parking, uh, especially related, not only related to downtown, but also the arena, um, built into the River District concept is parking that would be underground against the levee on the backside. So depending on how they built it and what the final designs were, would be, there would be a parking structure underneath the living spaces that would not only shore up the levee, but also, um, retain and possibly even expand the amount of parking that, uh, available at Hobart Arena. And by being adjacent to and having a direct scenic, easily accessible, uh, alternative walkway, safe walkway, uh, from one side of the river to the other, um, they tell us, the, the MKSK team tells us that we'll ac- actually help alleviate the perceived parking problem downtown because people will be more likely to want to park at the arena under the, under the River District, wherever. Use that parking lot that 75% of the time is not used, is just sitting there vacant. Uh, and, and because there's that direct, uh, connection, some of that parking, uh, issue could, could be alleviated. All, all of that needs to be further fleshed out, uh, and that's why none of this is here for approval today or asking for money to, to build it tomorrow or go out to bid. today, or asking for money to build it tomorrow, or go out to bid. Again, these are just concepts, but those are the kind of questions and issues that we want them to address before we would get too far into the weeds.
I would also encourage, as you go out and talk to the different groups, that you do reach out beyond preaching to the choir, per se, that you keep, you know, you talk about talking to the different service organizations and things, but I would also hope that, I don't know if it would be through the school district, or how you could do it, but to get out and speak to some of the, the people that are contributing to our tax base, the people that are working, and try to get some feedback from them before this is a done deal, before this is final. I understand they're maybe not the ones that are directly putting the money into this study, but they are the ones that are, you know, putting money into our pockets and keeping us going. So Southwest Historic District is a good start, but if you could get out into the other areas of town and try to, you know, speak to as many people as possible, I think that would be a good move as well. Are there any questions from the audience? Anybody that has any comments or questions at this point in time?
Hi, Rosemary Jones, 1453 Cornish Road. I don't usually get up here, and I don't want to be a naysayer, but I'm sort of the one that's not mentioned except right here on the end. And so I kind of think that there's a lot of millennial, 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 Generation X, but there's not a whole lot of me. And I think there's a lot of people like me who also were born and raised here and wanted to stay in their retirement, and they're my age. So I think there needs to be consideration of those people, and I think Marty kind of addressed that in that you need to speak to more people. Mr. Turwileger also spoke to, I think there's a lot of congestion in this, on the streets, and no parking mentioned to speak of. And that concerns me, that we're filling up the streets, to me, we're cluttering the river. You know, I see some up there, would be wonderful, but I don't see that we should have, you know, take up Hobart parking lots and have both sides of the street, or both sides of the river full of buildings and that sort of thing. I also don't think that there's really, if you've ever watched the live feed camera, that traffic circle works wonderfully. And I think it's beautiful, and I think my class still watches that live feed because it's downtown Troy. It's the Troy that people have known for a while. And I don't think you can change everything. And I'm not trying to be negative. I know you have to move forward, but you also, I think, have to think about the people who have lived here for a long time. And you're going to make some drastic changes if you put most of these through. So I don't want to be a naysayer, like I said, but I do think that you need to take into consideration everybody that lives here, and not just attracting more to change the people who live here. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on the committee? Anybody else have any comments? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week, and a good holiday, meaning it learned.